Welcome. I'd like to call the April 17th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Vicki. Excused. Ms. Yalloway? Excused. Ms. Hugh? Here. Ms. Crutch? Here. Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Dunler?
Here.
Ms. Hewer? Here. Thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Please stand for a moment of silence for Maureen Dubertsky and Frank White. Thank you. Maureen was in our Transportation Department and Frank White was a retired teacher. Open to the public, I don't see anyone in the audience that doesn't work here. So I'm going to move on to our workshops. We have two workshops tonight, a budget update and an update on pre-K. So we'll start with the budget update.
Standing back there. All right, good evening. So we've been talking about the budget for several months now, and tonight we wanted to try to tie it all together and talk about some of the main things we're focusing on and also talk about the numbers. And but just to preface, so we've really completed our budget work. The state has not, so I think they're not applying. They have another budget extension bill that will take it a few more days. And everything I'm reading says that the state process may be prolonged this year for a while, mostly not focused on education issues but other issues that they're still trying to work through. That said, the information from the state has been really clear this year. House, Senate, and Governor have all been unified in their funding of education, so we feel confident in what we're moving forward with tonight. So way back when, we talked about some of the things really focusing our work this year. So hopefully, as we go through this tonight, you'll see a couple of common strands. One is providing more academic and mental health supports to students and also just more opportunities for access and excellence. And those things are not obviously exclusive. They are bound together. So first, we wanted to start with pre-K. Our thought tonight was to do, you know, two workshops. It's just still going to be the two of us, so we're going to kind of quickly talk about pre-K here in terms of just like as a part of the larger budget. And then we will have a separate pre-K where we have three or four slides where we just kind of talk about the program here in Beacon a little bit. But the proposal here is to add one FTE of additional staff. That would allow us to have six full day in district classes and also 10 student slots in community-based organizations. And again, we'll talk more about pre-K later. Beacon High School, we do have a world language teacher retiring, so that is something we are filling. So we're not adding a lot of additional staff to the high school this year. There are some new classes, AP African Studies class and the AP Environmental Science class is coming back. So we're excited about that. And Cory's been working, and his team have been working a lot of plans to provide more support for our ninth graders as they transition in this year, too. So that's a smaller part of the budget. Something that's not here is we have had a split social worker. Half of her time is here at the high school, half of her time at Ramout. And our proposal is to make her full-time here at the high school and then create a full social work position at the middle school. As we've said over and over, the need is really there. And we're excited to be moving forward with that. One thing that we're pulling back from, and not in a bad way at all, this year, we've had two positions that have really focused on restorative practices at the high school. One was we created a one-year position where as a guidance counselor focused on restorative practices. And we also created a position in the CSEA called a youth aide that was focused on restorative practice. We're going to keep the youth aide position in next year's budget. We are moving the guidance counselor back to the guidance office, and we are going to kind of fill in the teacher-level support with a few stipends for teachers to focus on restorative practices or guidance counselors. We feel like a lot was put in place this year and that there's enough kind of structure and support for them to keep doing the work with a little bit less staffing around restorative practices. But they've had a lot of success. At Ramout, we are adding some positions here. This is after a lot of conversations with both Mr. Saltis and his team and also teachers in the building and just us seeing needs. So one is, I talked about the social worker position that was split between the two buildings. We're making it full-time both at VHS, and then we'll be hiring for a full-time social worker at Ramout. We're adding a world language teacher. Right now, we have three of our language teachers at Ramout teaching an extra period. We'd like to do away with that. We'd like to bring the class sizes down a little bit for world language because they're our largest classes. And we'd also like to support the growth of the Italian language program. A Spanish teacher at Ramout this year has now become certified in Italian, and so she'll be able to teach both at Ramout. So we're excited to move forward with that. To do all of that, we do need an additional world language teacher. After studying our music program, and there's kind of a lot of some people being really thinly spread across what they do and some large classes, we're adding a .5 general music FTE at Ramout. And then lastly, and you're going to, you know, see this kind of throughout our talking, we're adding a reading teacher to Ramout, just again, based on need. You know, again, that focus on both mental health and academic support. So we're excited to be able to create an additional social work position and additional reading AIS teacher at Ramout this year. You know, last year, we talked about some teachers on special assignment positions at the district. Some we want to continue and some we want to expand on and some we want to create. As I said, though, one we're already pulling back from, that was the restorative practices guidance position at the high school. Again, we feel like we have a lot of support in place and we have, we think we can fill it with some stipend and positions. This year, we've had one response to intervention coordinator, and she's done an amazing job. She is spread super thin because she's working with all four elementary schools and goes into Ramout. And it's also been very successful, helping to bring a lot of coherence to our RTI program, a lot of support to teachers and support to principals and support to families, ultimately with the goal of supporting our students. So that program or that position has been so successful, we actually want to expand it and create a second one. And our vision for that is that they kind of split the four elementary schools and they both work on some level at Ramout, providing support as well. Last year, we created a one-year TOSA that's a social emotional coordinator at the elementary level. I should add a slash because she also does some things at the middle school level as well. Her reach has been vast and throughout every classroom at the elementary level and many classrooms at Ramout, supporting teachers, doing circles, doing trainings. She's done an amazing job. We would like to continue that one for an additional year. She's really done a lot with supporting individual students all the way to PD for not only teachers but TAs as well and really been invaluable. And so we'd like to continue that position for an additional year. And then we're adding, we're adding two certified math intervention teachers at the elementary level. Our thought is that they'll be split, you know, they'll each have two schools and that they will, they'll be collaborating with the TAs that already are providing math intervention in the building and providing support to students and also support to those TAs. Again, those positions will be evaluated at the end of this upcoming school year. And like the high school one, there may be one that we pull back on or reevaluate. But right now, we're really seeing the need. I think a lot of districts are. And this speaks to our goal at the beginning. We really want to be providing more support, both academically and mental health, and we feel like these positions really get to that. One of the ways that we were kind of paying for these positions in two ways, actually three. One is through retirements that we have, and that's a way that we kind of continually try to fund positions. A second is through some of the federal money that we still are able to use. And then thirdly, we are looking at class sizes across the district and making some shifts there. Our elementary class size initiative was so successful that we've really brought those class sizes down and we could actually bring them up. This average will still be probably next year around 18, which is great. But there are some positions that could be converted into some of these, and that's what we're working on right now. So it's just a reevaluation of some of the resources we already have, trying to use them differently with a small number of these positions being created new. These are just some smaller budget items, but just in speaking with our stakeholders within the district, we are providing some extra budget resources for some new musical instruments that the comprehensive, you know, instrument program came up with from grade four to 12. Some music curriculum support for all of our buildings, some consistent funding for art supplies in the elementary schools. Later this year, we're going to be presenting to you some information about our clubs and our after-school activities, just exponentially expanding this year. We have, we have just really huge growth in terms of student participation from elementary school all the way through high school in extracurricular clubs and after-school activities. So we'd like to keep that going. So we've budgeted for that. And then lastly, this is something, I mean, all these things, I endure strategic planning work, that we want to do some family events beyond the ones that are contractually covered. We have like parent conference night, we have back-to-school night, we have open house night. We want to do some more targeted things that educate our families and get them involved in what we're doing. So for starters, this spring, there's going to be kindergarten orientation events at all four of our elementary buildings at night for parents who are registered for kindergarten for next year. You know, they had, at Sergeant, they had the family resource night this year. We want to expand that to all four elementary schools. Those things are outside of the operating contract for the different units we work with, and we want to be able to fund those things, too. So Emery's going to take over just with some information about the budget overall. Anthony?
Just some, before you go on to the money part, how many of the positions that you're talking about are going to be newly created? Like, we need to add staff? Or like, because you said it was going to be one of three ways, right?
The elementary ones are even.
Yes.
The middle school ones, the social worker, the language teacher and the music teacher, those are new, 2.5. The rest have come from either, some of the TOSSs are federally funded, but some of the TOSSs we're expanding are coming from, I want to say, I don't want to say class size reduction, but you know, like pulling back from that a little bit and re-converting some of those positions. So in terms of brand-new positions, it's the 2.5 at Ramout.
And how many of them are funded now through the federal grant, but when the federal grant ends, not this September, but next September?
Right now, we only have, we have, the plan is to use a federal grant to put teachers in there that would actually retire at the end of the ARP so that we're not carrying them into it. So we were able with the reduction of the elementary sections that we're going to offer and also some retirements that we're not replacing, we were able to not use federal stimulus but not increase the budget. So add it.
And we're not, this is, at the elementary level, we're not reducing like a huge number of classes. We're looking at four sections across all four of the schools. We have some class sizes this year that have gotten down to like 11 and 12. And so that was never our goal to bring elementary classes that small, so we're readjusting up a little bit and trying to convert those into these support positions. We want to be a little bit smarter and more targeted with how we're using our FTE and we feel like both the mental health focus and that academic support focus is a real need for us right now. But in terms of just new positions, it's the 2.5 at Ramout.
Does this involve anybody being laid off in these positions?
Absolutely not. No.
It's all through attrition and reassignment.
Retirement?
So this is, so Matt mentioned also, the New York State budget is not adopted as of yet, which is kind of strange because usually I do this budget presentation and I at least know what our state aid would definitely be. But since the Assembly and the Senate and the Governor are all on the same page about increasing foundation aid, that's what we're going with. So that's what we actually think on the education side we would do. Again, we mentioned about the UPK expansion. There was money for existing programs. We received additional funding to increase our program, so it was more slots available. There are a lot of districts, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, that don't have a UPK program. And it's, you know, to get them started, it's similar to when they used to have half-day kindergarten and they wanted to transition to full-day kindergarten, you'd get extra money. So that was money earmarked. We do hear, if you read the Senate and Assembly budget proposals, we do hear they're still talking about giving us additional money for UPK. We're hoping it's additional funding for the program we have, which would be great. But they're a little bit still unclear about that. Also in the mix is school meals. It's included in both the Senate and Assembly budget proposals, was not in the Governor's run, but there has been some talk that it might go through in some aspects. Speaking to Karen Pagano, our school lunch director, it's kind of a conjunction with the state and the federal working the program together. So we're a little hopeful there that that would happen. And for our staff and just all districts around, the earnings cap for retirees, that was waived this year. So we have, there's been some reduction of staff available. Certain teaching certifications are hard to get, so they've allowed retirement, retired teachers and staff to come back and not be limited to the $34,000 limit. That expires in June unless it's part of the final budget to go forward. So that's kind of on the horizon. We're just kind of waiting for that. And we did mention federal stimulus money. We do have what is called ESER 2, which is over in September, and that was the program that really ran the, or any of the after-school programs, all the summer schools for the last couple of summers. And, you know, also some things related directly to COVID. So that's almost all spent, and we can talk about at later board meetings how that money was used. American Rescue Plan is the one that goes till a year from September. So there's some infrastructure things in that budget, but there's still a lot of money available there as well. We tried not to pay for continuing staff in there because then eventually it has to be transitioned into the general fund. So it is, you know, helping us pay for people that are going to retire at the end of when this is going to happen. So it'll just kind of fade off into that. And I'm sorry, this is small. And again, I will talk about this at the budget hearing, but this is just the quick calculation of the tax cap. So for Beacon City School District, our maximum levy increase can be 3.64%. And I just want to talk about some of the highlights. So, you know, taking the calculation aside, your prior year levy, an important fact here would be the tax-based growth factor. And you've heard me talk about this over the last couple of years. So Beacon, because we are growing, our tax-based growth factor has been one of the highest ones in the county, which allows the levy to increase. And it doesn't really reflect assessments. It talks about actual properties, buildings, extras that are going on in the city. So for us, again, it's higher than most. It's not as high as it was last year, but it's, like I said, it's higher than others in Duchess County. And the allowable growth factor. So the allowable growth factor is at 2%. It's CPI or the highest of 2%. It's unusual because the school district budget notice is on the agenda to be voted for, and they had the inflation at 8%. So it's like the 2% doesn't even mean anything in this, you know, but that's the maximum amount that we could use. So we have pilots coming in and out. A capital exclusion is the amount of debt, principal and interest we pay, less the building aid. So there are a lot of ins and outs, but for us, overall, we can increase the levy by 1.6 million or 3.64%. And this is a spreadsheet just kind of showing the revenue and how we calculate the levy. Again, the 3.64%, what the budget to budget is, is 3.48%. We, so different things that you see here that you haven't seen before, transfer from debt service. So we are working through the capital project. We do have a debt service fund that's close to $3 million. You can only use debt service money to offset principal and interest. So to kind of keep our levy flat, our financial advisors had suggested that we take $180,000 from debt service. And our miscellaneous revenue. So everyone is very upset about how much interest rates have gone up, right? All of us, about how much you have to pay. But on the flip side, this is a year that we have actually made a lot of money in interest income, which is wonderful. We haven't seen that in quite a while. So we are, we are able to invest in certain, in NILAF, which is a, you know, an organization set up just for school districts and municipalities, you know, for short-term notes, three-month notes, six-month notes. So our treasurer's been doing a great job investing and just maximizing our interest income. So there's some other, and some BOSI's reimbursement of prior year expenditures in there. So our miscellaneous revenue has grown by 384,000 going forward. And we're seeing that this year as well. So when we talk about the results of the way the year has funded, you'll see extra revenue as well. And just briefly, like what we had talked about before, so far, we are putting up a bus proposition to purchase three 72-passenger buses, one 20-passenger van. We plan on doing a bus ban, which goes over five years, which kind of matches the state aid that we receive, the transportation aid on school buses. So that would be one proposition. We are also putting out an EV bus proposition. This proposition is a little bit differently worded. We want to fund an EV bus purchase, and now an EV bus for a 72-passenger is closer to $466,000. But the proposition is going to say that only if the district receives subsidy of up to $250,000 because we want to make it fair. We want to make it as close to the cost of a regular bus as possible. Now, there is a plan in the Governor's budget, even a little bit more if it goes through, so that we need to have, we need to start progressing to an EV bus fleet. And we felt after speaking to a lot of consultants in the area and people that work for Central Hudson, that this might be a good start. So our thought process is to buy an EV bus, if we get the funding, to actually utilize it in our bus runs, to see what happens with it, to actually get the charger that goes with it, to start training the mechanics with it, and then come up with a plan of how we get our bus garage to the point that we can start converting more of our buses. But this is just a start to try to figure out how to move forward by the mandated requirement. And we are putting a proposition up also to reduce the mileage limit for our students riding buses. So right now, it's at 1.5 miles. We want to change it to one mile. It will impact some of the bus, it'll be minimal cost because a lot of our buses are not full when we're traveling there. We like to target certain areas that children that have difficulty getting to school. So we're hoping that it helps attendance. We have, it's kind of more focused on secondary because on the elementary side, you know, if a bus comes and there's, you know, an elementary student has to cross the street, we tend to pick them up anyway, even if they're, you know, a little bit below 1.5 miles. So the elementary, we've been kind of working it out more of a safety procedure. But the secondary, we'd really like to try to target certain housing areas where we find it difficult for children to get to school, and we're hoping that this makes it happen a little bit easier. Does anyone have questions?
Just quickly before that, I forgot to put a slide just about communication. So we have, you know, what we do every year, our budget mailer, we're working on that going out. We have to wait till the last day for candidates to turn in the petition before that goes out, but we're working on that right now. We will put out that we're open to coming to PTO meetings over the next month. We're going to do a virtual Zoom session, and I am going to have some technical support with me when I do it. Because I had some issues when I did it on my own a month ago. So I will do a Zoom session. I will record that, put it on YouTube. So we'll try to do different things to get the word out. We'll also just do, put some information on the website, just email reminders and email some informational stuff, too. The one thing I am trying to talk about when I already did my community conversation tour the last couple of months is I've really been talking with each of those groups about the ballot is going to look different this year. There are extra things on it, more than normal. You know, there is the proposition, as Emery just talked about, to reduce the 1.5 to one mile, you know, transportation requirement. The EV bus, you know, is important for us to explain. So we look forward to the next month of really getting the word out about the budget. This is a really exciting budget. We feel like it's a really good use of our resources. Emery's been working overtime, trying to kind of make it all work and make it all fit together. We've really done a lot with our administrators and teacher leaders in terms of needs in the district. And we really think this represents, just, you know, again, like each budget is a next step. This is a next step for us in terms of more supports for mental health, more academic supports, building more structures in the district that support students, and also just creating more opportunities for students in a lot of different, a lot of different variety and also age level, too. So we're really excited to be putting this budget forward to you all. And now questions?
Now questions.
Looking through the detailed line item budget, and I had to finish my own budget, that is, doing my taxes. So I haven't put as much time in this as I would like. The thought occurred to me in general that when you structure the presentations on the budget, if we could build in some additional time to be able to look at the line by line. I mean, there's a lot of lines in there and a lot of questions come up. I just, I'll just do one because I'm not worried about anything in there. But I noticed that there's a lot of increases in what we're doing with BOSI's. And there's a big change in a couple of the BOSI's lines and a big increase in a whole lot of the others. And they appear here, there and everywhere peppered throughout the budget. Could you summarize that? What's going on? What's the difference this year?
I could, I could take a first step at it than you. You may have some more specific details, but we've been really working with the administrative group to try to do as many things as possible through BOSI's. So a lot of the professional development, some of the contractual things that we're doing, we're really trying to work through coasters, either with Duchess BOSI's or other BOSI's. One of the big reasons is, and I, pretty much every chance I get to say this, I say it if I'm in front of a group, we get, the money we spend on something, if it's done through BOSI's, we get revenue back the next year. So if we do professional development, you know, whether it's like a sort of a per day sort of thing or it's like someone from BOSI's works with us for X number of days, whatever money we spend on that, we get, what's the percent back?
It's 57%.
We get 57% of that money that we spent back the next year. So it not only meets needs in the district, but it creates another revenue stream for us. So, and you know, as we, in all the budget presentations leading up to tonight, you heard Saggy talk about doing more things through BOSI's in her PD presentation. Heather talked about doing more things through BOSI's in the PPS. Scott, our technology director, talked about doing more things through BOSI's, too. So that's one of the reasons you see, or probably the main reason you're seeing increases. Any?
No, that's perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Emery.
Any other questions? I just wondered, this isn't directly related to the budget, but in terms of the nine-period class day that is happening at the high school, you guys are feeling good about that and that's moving forward and?
Yeah, we are. There may be some need to, and this is something that we're going to need a little bit more time to figure out. There may be some need to do extra periods for some of the highs, you know, like some high school teachers teach an extra class beyond the five that they currently teach. We're kind of in the midst of evaluating that now. We did budget for some of that, you know, so we're prepared for that if it's needed. I, you know, I think there were some kinks this year, but I think overall it enabled them a lot more flexibility to get kids kind of what they needed, and a few more options for kids. We did a very kind of, I don't want to say cursory, but like a very initial look at possibly doing it at the middle school. So when we started that conversation, the middle school just had these needs even before we even started talking about nine-period day, and that's reflected in those positions that came up. And that's just to get the A-period day for the middle school, that additional language teacher, the, the reading teacher for students who need support, the band, the point-five music. And then the, you know, the mental health needs of our students, you know, keeps being ever-present. So we want to keep fulfilling that. So, you know, so that talk about the middle school, we're kind of putting off to the future just because we needed those resources just to shore up what we're currently doing. But Mr. Dwyer's here, he wants to say anything about the, your good, the nine-period day?
This year, I think we're, we have six or seven teachers teaching a sixth period. And so I think we would anticipate sort of that next year, kind of at a minimum, potentially a couple more. We do have a lot of students in study hall this year, which hasn't been as much of a challenge as we thought it would be. I think we generally find that the students appreciate having the opportunity for a break in their schedule and the opportunity to do some work. We have worked really hard, and we did this last summer, to minimize the number of students who have more than one study hall in their, their schedule. So our counselors are almost done meeting with all of their students to input course requests for next year. So we anticipate by the end of next week, being able to really finalize the tally process to determine the number of sections for each course. So I, I don't anticipate a dramatic change from what we saw this year.
Thanks.
Thank you. And also, in terms of the, and this is probably a conversation for us to have a little later, but I'm excited about summer school happening again. I understand that that's being paid for through the federal money. And I just wonder, like, when, when should we start that conversation about what would be possible within our own budget for the summer of twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, we haven't budgeted in American Rescue for this year, but that actually goes through September, so we actually could do it for two years. But when Matt and I talk about what actually goes into the federal stimulus money, there's a plan to, how we're going to put it into the general fund. So we were able to do that. We had, we had hired extra, a second custodial worker in each of the elementary schools during COVID. They were being paid out of one of our federal stimulus, so we were able to put them in and keep them going and making sure the buildings are what they are. So we have a plan to migrate things into the general fund if they're getting paid. But we're planning to utilize at least the federal stimulus for two summers, and then start to come up with a plan to get it into the general fund, to keep it going.
So after the summer of twenty twenty?
So it, so it's safe through twenty twenty-four?
I mean, one, the, the, the other challenge we're having with summer programming right now is just with the capital project lifting off, like this summer, even though it's not a huge amount of work, it's enough that it all has to be here at the high school. So it's, it's, it's still going to be some pretty rich programming, but instead of four weeks for elementary and middle, it's going to be three weeks for both of those groups, just because we just are kind of running out of space. Summer of twenty twenty-four will probably be even more challenging for space. But, you know, we have some time to figure that out, too.
And then the last thing I had was, I'm just really excited to hear about the increased participation with extracurriculars. And I think it would be great to see data on that at some point, because I feel like that's just a really important part of the equity work we're doing, and, and just kind of understanding how that, how that impacts other parts of, you know, the student body.
No, it's, I mean, we've seen huge growth at the elementary level with offerings and, and student participation, and, and then upticks at the middle and high school level. The thing we're working on right now with that is working with each principal to really map out what they want to do next year now. So things are posted for, so the board is appointing for clubs as, as many as possible over the summer. So, so it's not so like, kind of hodgepodge throughout the year. We also, at the elementary level, want to achieve some level of, not that every elementary school has to offer the same thing, but that there's like a, some level of equitable offerings between the four elementary schools. So we're working on that as well. But at the elementary level, the numbers are, are large, and we're working on those together. But it, it's, 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 you know, there's so much research that talks about student connection to school happens in lots of different ways. And in after-school activity, whether it's a sport, or music, or drama, or just an interest club, can connect a student in a way that sometimes the, you know, the first period to last period does. And that connection isn't just a high school thing or a middle school thing. It really begins in the middle of elementary school, where we really need to start doing that. And so we've stepped up this year and tried to get that process started. So we're excited about pushing that forward.
Yeah, it's great that kids going into middle school aren't going to be thinking about joining a club for the first time. They'll already have had that experience, and they'll even be looking for it as part of a way to, you know, to make middle school fun and feel included in it.
Yeah, if I, if I'm reading my calendar correctly, I think we're meeting with Mr. Solches tomorrow to talk about clubs, a roundabout, because I, I think he's probably inheriting, or not inheriting, he's going to be gaining a lot of sixth graders who've been doing a lot of fifth graders. And, and, you know, like, it's, we want to see how, you know, see if that, we can transition kids that way, too.
Yeah.
It's also, you know, a huge shout out to our teachers for just coming up with really lots of cool ideas. And, and so that's been really fun to see.
Yeah. Well, and I was talking to one teacher about it, and she was just saying that it's, it's really great for the teachers to connect with their kids through the clubs as well, because it kind of, it just is a, it's a different way, you know? And it's less structured, and it's just fun, and, and I think it does really deepen the connection. So I think the teachers are enjoying it, too.
Right. And at the Forestal Pickleball Club, parents were invited for one of the sessions, and I was allowed to go.
How's your game?
And I think I scored a point, and I think my, my son was in shock because I did something athletic. So that was fun. For parents who need clubs, too. Not fun to buy us, though.
Okay, great, thank you. No, no more questions regarding the budget? Okay, so moving on to the pre-K workshop.
I think Mike's got a, or you're going to do?
I think I have it.
So we, we just wanted to take tonight to also provide, this, this can be fairly quick, but we wanted to just provide a focused update on pre-K. And so we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, the history of pre-K. I don't, you know, I wasn't here for all of that history, so Anne Marie can jump in. Talk a little bit about what the state supports, what we offer here in the district. And then we also, I, I didn't do a great job of summarizing the board advocacy work around pre-K, so I'd love for you to all to jump in at any point, but especially in that one, you know, just to talk about some of the board advocacy concerns with pre-K as well. But before I get into all this history, I'm going to embarrass Anne Marie for a second. You know, there's a huge advocate for pre-K in the district, and it's our deputy superintendent. So every year, she is very passionate about finding the funding to make it work. You know, it's like finding the classrooms to make it work, working on a lot of the logistical issues as well. And then we have, at the administrative level, one of the stipends in their contract is pre-K. Cassandra Orser is the administrator who does that. She's equally as passionate. So I just wanted to quickly give a shout out to them about it. So through the twenty twenty-one school year, all district pre-K offerings were half-day. It was a half-day program in the district. And then, and then students could also be at the CBOs. I'm not going to read each point, but the next year, we piloted one full-day class, just to see how it went. And it worked really well. And so then, this current school year is when we rolled out five full-day pre-K classes offered to students, along with those slots at the CBOs. And then next year, we, as we talked in the budget presentation a couple of minutes ago, we want to offer six. So I think right now, how we have it configured is two of the, two of the classes at Glendale, two at Sargent, one at South, and one at Forestal. That does not mean that, and I, I guess we could get into this more at the lottery. It doesn't mean that those schools have more slots, like we want to provide an equitable chance for any student who registered for pre-K to get in. And then, just doing some research across Duchess County a couple of days last week. So we, as you know, you know, we're at about twenty-seven hundred students. We are by far not the largest district in Duchess County. In fact, we're on the smaller side of all the districts in the county. There's thirteen. If you take all those districts into account, we offer more full-day pre-K by, as my dad would say, by a mile over any of the other districts. So we're, we're, we're doing more and have been doing more within district pre-K than any district in Duchess County. I didn't have time to do like a regional thing, that takes a little bit more time. Just being in meetings and hearing things, my hunches that were in the top tier of what's offered regionally for pre-K as well. And again, I want to attribute that, a lot of that to Anne Marie's leadership over the years in making that happen. This is probably more Anne Marie's slide than me, but I'll give it a shot, and then you just jump in. So I think one of the things that we've talked about at the board level quite a bit, sometimes it's in a committee, it's not always in here, sometimes it's in the fuller meetings, is, you know, the, the, the state notion of UPK is sort of a misnomer. I almost put quotes around UPK, and then I took it out. I thought that was a little much to do that. But when you hear universal pre-K, you feel like, wow, this is being fully funded by the state. It's not. The state gives districts fifty-four hundred dollars per child in UPK, not unlimited either, up to a certain allotment. So that's fifty-four hundred for each student. So, you know, just doing some really basic math, that's nowhere near what a child attending our district costs. And the pre-K students cost, so to speak, just as much as any other students. Our pre-K students, I should have mentioned this, they attend our class, they attend PE classes, they attend music classes. So they're, they're getting all the same things that the K through five students are getting. So there's not a lower cost to those, to those kids. In fact, it's a little bit of a higher cost because of TA and possibly an aide in the class, along with the teacher. So by my estimate, the state maybe comes close to funding about fifty percent of what it actually costs. It, it varies a little bit by who's teaching pre-K in any given year. If it's a more experienced teacher, obviously they're getting paid more, and so it's more expensive. We won't get into it at that level, but, but the state is only partially funding pre-K. So any of the allotments we get from the state, ten percent of those funds must go to slots at community-based organizations. I already talked about that. So, so when the state talks about we're funding pre-K, we're giving more money to pre-K, they are talking about giving more of that per-child allotment. They are not talking about, we're going to give you ten thousand dollars for every student that you have in district. Or that's never what they talk about in terms of increasing. They only talk about increasing the, the number of slots, not the amount that they give per slot. It's probably the biggest issue as this expands. I know it's an advocacy issue for the board. So when there is more interest in pre-K seats than seats available, districts can either do first, first come, first served, or a lottery. We decided this year to do a lottery for a couple of reasons. One is we thought doing, you know, we knew we're switching to full day, we've been getting rave reviews about full day. We knew even expanding it, that interest would be high. We wanted to do a lottery because, you know, I think probably the main reason is we thought it was more equitable. We felt like a first come, first served, where it's who sort of registers the most quickly online, creates something where a family that's maybe has a higher outside stress levels, working multiple jobs, English is a new language to the family, like those kinds of things would cause them maybe not to sign up as quickly as another family. So we felt really more for equity reasons than anything else that we wanted to do a lottery. And then I just wanted to mention, too, that, and this probably could be its own separate conversation somewhere down the line. In fact, we may want to have that conversation, but counties, not just Duchess County, but counties across New York are the providers of support for pre-K students with IEPs. That has become much more complicated over the last few years. The need has increased during the pandemic. You know, for young people, we talk about that almost in every board meeting, but the need's increased for our youngest students. And, but then the staffing issues that the county, who the county contracts with to provide these services, the staffing issues have become a lot more complicated and difficult, and so there's been some issues there. So at a future meeting, we may talk a little bit more about what we're doing. But we want to just talk about UPK in general tonight. And then Anne Marie's going to talk about the lottery process. So the lottery is going to be happening, or the physical part of the lottery is happening tomorrow. She's going to go through the details, and then what happens next.
Thank you. So we opened online registration, which is, which has been a very easy, seamless procedure for the entire district. We opened it on March twenty-second, and we ended it this past Friday, April fourteenth. So we gave people ample time to actually do it. We had a few people who do not have access to a computer that came into our office to use it. So it kind of accomplished our equity goal there, you know, gave people enough time to contact us and tell us that they were interested in the program. So our procedures were, we, we gave each child that registered a number. And we're going to be using a number generator program to select numbers of people, of children. As a child is chosen, they'll be put into their home school immediately. Because Matt had mentioned that we have only one program at two of our elementaries, at Forestal and at South, if a child is chosen and their home school is full, they'll be assigned to another school. And then as we go on, we will fill all of the slots. And then once there are people that would, that didn't get chosen, we will, we will do the number generator to actually put people as a number on a waiting list. I will say that last year, with full day, there are reasons for people that, that don't commit even once they do the lottery. So we did have people that were on the waiting list actually enter into the program. You know, other things that people move, or, or, you know, choose other ways. What we were planning on doing, we do have two to three requests of the CBOs. So some parents have other children that are going to daycare in both of those locations. So they want to keep their pre-K or in that program, so they will automatically get into the CBO and be taken out of the lottery. They won't be put into the lottery in our school, which actually helps, you know, in this aspect. I also want to mention, and this is something that we're going to see tomorrow after we do the lottery, each pre-K classroom gets, can have up to a maximum of eighteen students with a teaching assistant. That's the model. We have had, there, you can go up to twenty students with a teacher aide, a teaching assistant, and a teacher in the classroom, per the state regs. So if we're close enough to fill, as, you know, all of the requests, we, we may go in the route of doing a teacher aide. We have, over the last year, seen that we do have a lot of teacher aides in the district. I don't, that wouldn't necessarily require a hiring, it would just be a redistribution of, of an aide into a classroom. So that's, that's in the horizon, we can do that, it's not against regulation. So we're going to see as closely as we are of accommodating as many families as we can with the lottery.
And then, I, I didn't do it justice, the summary, the brief summary I have here for advocacy that the board has participated in. But I, but I, I did want to say, this has been a focus of the board for, for many years in terms of increasing funday, funding and, and requesting an increase in the per-student funding. I will also mention, it's not on the slide, but there has been discussion at like the PRL, P R A L meetings about advocating with the state, about possibly making the pre-K program more of a need-based program in terms of like, you know, like, it goes to families in greater need first, before it goes out to everyone else. And that could be evaluated through income or a variety of measures. So, so anyway, I, you know, we wanted to provide a little bit of context to the board just about the things we've been working through with pre-K, the history with pre-K in the district. And we wanted to provide an opportunity for you all to maybe add to the advocacy thing, because I didn't do that slide justice, and, and also answer questions.
Do you want me to sort of go through what we're doing?
Yeah, so this is definitely something that we've been focusing on. And I know last year, we were, there were NISBA resolutions related to pre-K, and we had, we wanted to propose an amendment with language last year about it being properly funded. So that was sort of when I think the- So that was sort of when I think the discussion started picking up steam. Then there were, there have actually been discussions with the Duchess County School Board Association and with, through NISBA, with legislators and their education committees in the Senate and Assembly. And this is a discussion point that's been brought up repeatedly. And this year, when we went to Albany with the Duchess County School Board Association contingent, we advocated on several issues and pre-K funding was one of those issues. We also sent follow-up emails to Robert Rolison and Jonathan Jacobson where we articulated specific asks for pre-K. And Anthony, thank you for, for putting that language together. It included the state covering the full cost of a UPK program rather than the current coverage of about 50% per student, making transportation expenses eligible for aid, cost inflation factor in per pupil allocations and other points. And everything was in line with the advocacy that's also happening with the Lower Hudson Education Coalition. So based on all of this, we've also put together a prepared statement and it basically pulls together all of our previous advocacy language. And we plan on, along with contact info for the relevant representatives, we plan on sending that out to all the PTOs and PTAs hopefully tomorrow so that they'll be able to share this with their school communities and we can grow the advocacy and parents can start communicating this out with us because it definitely, the more unified and the more voices there are communicating this stuff, the more powerful it is. But yeah, we will obviously continue to, to advocate for it. And we have NISBA resolutions coming up that we have to, each district has to put together. And that's essentially a way for us to tell the New York State School Board Association, this is an issue that we feel very strongly, that we want you guys to advocate for. And they're a very strong, they have a very strong advocacy arm. So we want to make sure that the language about fully funding pre-K and, and other elements are, are included in these year's resolutions. Is there anything?
I, I'm appreciative of that. I just want to, you know, maybe emphasize a point in there. And I think the point is, is that the, the deeper we get into pre-K as a district or as leaders in the district, the more we really realize how complex it is. Like everything else we do, right? Every, everything has complexity. I feel like at the state level, it's not treated as a complex thing. It's, it's treated as like a, here's your allotment. And, you know, even when you said, and I, I want to reiterate this, there's not aid for transportation of pre-K students, correct? So we receive aid for, state aid for every other student that we transport. And what does that mean exactly?
It's part of our transportation aid formula. So it depends on how many eligible students there are that are riding the buses. So our pre-K students, we do, we do put them on our buses that are already going, that are taking the other children to the elementary schools, but we cannot count them into the count when they, when they calculate.
I mean, it may seem like a little thing, but it, but to me, it says, people aren't paying attention to the details of this. That should be. I also feel like a district that beacon, like beacon that's taken on pre-K at a higher level than most other districts, we should be treated as such. And, and, and so if we're taking it seriously and offering as much as we're offering, why don't we qualify for more funding? You know, like there are, and I'm not saying this, every district makes the best decisions they can for their community, but there are districts that refuse the UPK money. Like they don't, right?
Right.
So, you know, I mean, I'm going to sound a little sarcastic when I say this, but like if districts are refusing the money, why isn't that being funneled to districts that are going, trying to go all in on it? And I know that may be simplistic, a policymaker might find that simplistic, but things like transportation aid, a more sophisticated funding formula, like there's things with this that I think it's time. We know the, we know the, everyone knows the value of pre-K in terms of the research. We know how much our community values it, but I really think it's time for a more nuanced and strong approach to it at the state level instead of just kind of the same old thing that they just keep doing every year. So I say that because I'm really appreciative of the advocacy work the whole board has done with this. I just wanted to hit a couple of points because I, I think it gets lost sometimes, like how this is just sort of, here it is and figure it out kind of thing, when they could be doing a lot more.
Agreed. Yeah, definitely. I, I mean, I wonder if we could, you know, we can definitely write a resolution again for it and, and make it more. The resolution was not ours last year and, and it did get adopted, I think, but with our, with their language and it didn't go into the specifics. So I, I think we should do our own resolution, but maybe there, if you can let us know what districts are taking advantage if, as far as you know, in our, you know, in our area, maybe we can co-sponsor the resolution and give it, none of our resolutions passed last year. You know, maybe we can get a little bit more power behind it going in.
Yeah, and I, I think the Duchess County School Board Association is hopefully going to do more collective resolutions.
Yeah, because there were so many resolutions last year.
So I, I think it would be easy to get multiple districts behind this one.
And we do have a meeting scheduled with Jonathan Jacobson for the 28th to reiterate this concern because it sounds like it wasn't heard in, you know, in the way we meant it at least, to make sure that they understand what are, why we are concerned. Cause I don't even think they think about it in the weeds, the way we have to, that like, you know, this only, this only covers this. It doesn't get into transportation. We do provide transportation to the homeschools, but also if a child is placed in a, you know, a school that's not in their area, obviously they're, they're transported there, that, you know, there are, there are so many costs around it. But I, I really believe in it and I think it's really important to support it. I think that there, there are dividends that we, you know, this is pretty new for us. So it might be hard to measure them right now and especially coming out of COVID. But I feel like in terms of, you know, the children's skills and reading and, and just, you know, exposure to school coming in, really kind of getting it when they're in kindergarten, I think it's huge. Does anybody have any?
Craig.
Yeah. So with the CBOs, that there's a 10% set aside, is that in terms of dollars or students?
Seats.
It's, well, it's, yeah, it's both. So it's, it's 10, it, the 10% of our grant equates to 10 students. So we, we give 10, but we pay the CBO what we get paid from the state.
So it's not, of that, is there a set aside that goes to them?
So the CBOs, the parents would still have to pay a portion if they're there all day. And that would be dependent on which CBO they went, you know, which organization they went.
How many do we have in the district presently?
We have two CBOs. We have Rose Hill Manor and we have New Covenant Learning.
And, and that's, provides an adequate number to let us get everything that we can otherwise get, right?
Yeah, last year, having five classes last year, we did have more people that wanted the program. So we did recommend to them to go out into the community base and they did take advantage of that. And then we paid for that. So we ended up paying to the CBOs this current year more than the 10%. 10% is a minimum, but we wanted children to be able to access the program in some way. So it was just, it didn't cost us anything to send the additional people. And we gave, you know, them what the state had given us. Having this extra class does allow us to keep more in district and then still offer the, the 10 slots out.
Can you give us an idea of how, how many students do we appear to have who would want to be served, who probably won't because the program's not big enough? Any estimate there or ballpark?
So we, right now, we have about between 120, about 128 to 130.
In the program.
That have registered, that have registered. We can, right now with 18 in a classroom. We can take 108 with 10 out, so that's 118. And that's why we're contemplating going to 20.
And do you have?
It's close, we're close.
Yeah, and, and in terms of, because you're saying like a certain number, do you drop out every year for one reason or another? I mean, do you have an estimate of what the average is of that? Is it five or just?
It's probably no more than five.
Yeah.
What I will say though, is we are starting the process so much earlier than we did last year. Last year, we did it in the summer. We were, we were pulling names in July and August. It was difficult for parents at that time because they had to have some other way if they were working. So then that's why I think we're doing it now earlier so that we know. And then people, you know, some people do change their mind. It is a long day for some of our younger pre-Kers who make the cut, but are very close to the December 1st. And they just need another year. And some of the parents decide to wait and pull them out and, and just have them wait to go to kindergarten the following year. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. That's why we, we really wanted to do the lottery this way. We're contemplating different ways to, to maximize as many children into the, into the program here as possible.
And you mentioned that there, there is talk from some legislators about adding more money. And again, it would be the per pupil number, but do we have room? We, we could do the 20, up to 20, but we wouldn't add another class at this point.
We're kind of evaluating that right now, whether that's possible or not. I mean, the space thing, we didn't even talk about that.
Right.
But that's, that's another part of this whole thing that's really tricky. And we've, you know, we, we can fit the six classes. We're kind of evaluating about that right now. So we're not, we're not sure right now. I mean, we, you know, we also have to see what our K to five student numbers are going to be next year too. And we're kind of evaluating that as well. So, yeah. But, but we're, we're close. There's been a lot of effort on the team's behalf to put this together this year. And, and the, you know, I also need to just say like the, the schools, school teachers, the principals, the staff, they love having full day pre-K in their buildings. Like it's just, you know, everything is really strong about that. Like it's, most of the kids are in their homeschool, like, like they get used to going at a younger age. It makes the kindergarten transition so much easier. So it's, it's gone well this year.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. It's just you, Alejandra. How are you?
I'm good.
How was your spring break?
It was pretty good.
Yeah, did you go anywhere?
Yeah, I visited one college in Massachusetts called Williams College. And my dad went there, so.
Oh, nice. Did you like it?
It was okay.
I'm pulling out your board comments right here.
Yeah, I don't think it was for me, but yeah.
So you haven't made your decision yet?
No, not yet. But I mean, I'm still a junior, so.
Oh, you're still a junior?
Yeah, I'm still a junior.
You're just looking now, just shopping. Sorry.
So back off a little?
Sorry, sorry. I take you back. Any other news that you want to share with us?
No, I thought those presentations were really great though. I have a brother who's going into the middle school next year and then I have a sister that's going to hopefully do pre-K next year. So it was really, I enjoyed watching those presentations.
Are you going to the musical this weekend?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to go on Friday. Yeah.
Probably on the recording.
Hear it out.
Thanks. Okay, reviewing the agenda, there are a couple additions. Let me just find them. There are three additions. 12.15 instructional appointment, Lori Maline is being appointed to ATOSA effective 4/24/23. 12.16 instructional appointment, appoint club advisors at South Avenue. And 15.4, accept donation from South Avenue PTSO. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to discuss attorney-client advice? And the board will return in about 20 minutes.
So moved to second.
Moved by Flora, second by Eunice. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes to zero. Thank you. We're going to resume with our board meeting and begin with the superintendent's report.
All right. I just have a few quick updates that I wanted to just sort of update the board and the community on. The first is at the next board meeting next week, we will have a calendar for you to adopt. We, it's been done, but we have had, like we've been working through a couple of issues. We've worked through those, so I'll send it to the board several days ahead of time. We're, we're excited about the calendar next year. And it's a little bit more flexible with PD. It's had more flexibility with holidays, like it's a, it's a good calendar next year. And so I will also share that out. After the board approves it, we'll share it out with the whole community too, so they have it. Second is just a quick update. The, the board created a holiday name review committee several months ago to really specifically look at the Columbus Day holiday in terms of how we name it or label it on the school calendar. So that committee had its first meeting before spring break. And the committee's pretty much equally divided between people who think the name of the holiday should stay the same and people who think it should change. And so what we're doing right now is working through some common readings and having discussions about the different viewpoints around the holiday. And our goal, kind of towards the end of the school year, like end of June, is to either provide a recommendation to the school board or to, to just say where we're at in terms of a group with the school board. So I say these two things together and we'll provide an explanation of this when we send this out, that the calendar that we're putting in front of the board at the, next week, we'll have Columbus Day on it because there's been no official change of that. And so we'll just say like this could stay the same or, you know, this could change. And if it changes, it would change over the summer, is essentially the timeline. And then lastly, we had a special invitation tonight to see the Les Mis cast perform one of the songs. And just what a pleasure to see, what a huge group. It was the song that they sing right before the first intermission and one more day, am I right? One more day. And so, so it, there's kids from elementary all the way through 12th grade. And we have a lot of student musicians in the pit orchestra this year, which is also awesome. The set looks incredible. So I think I heard them talking that there's a few seats left. So there's still a chance to get tickets for it, but it's going to be an amazing performance. And I really appreciate them inviting us to get a little sneak preview. That's all I have.
Thank you. Board comments? Eunice?
I also would like to thank the Beacon Players for inviting us. That was great to watch and I'm excited to see them this weekend. That's it, thanks.
Me too, thank you. Elena?
No comment.
Anthony?
No comments.
Craig?
Oh yeah, that was a great show, the little half hour of it we saw. By the way, yes, there are some students in the pit orchestra. That's not unprecedented, but I believe the number is. And I'm pretty sure that that is a record-sized pit orchestra. I was kind of astonished to see, I actually asked Samantha, how many you got? She said 36. And that, that's like almost a Broadway-sized orchestra.
The record for Beacon.
So it sounds great and they're still working on it, putting the pieces together. I got tickets for Friday. I would strongly recommend that anybody who hasn't got tickets yet, do it quickly. I think the word is going to be spreading. It always amazes me that there's any empty seats left for the Beacon Players' performances because they do a knockout job no matter what it is. And that is not an easy show to do. And there's some very strong male voices this year. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed. And in committee work, we have Audit and Finance. It'll be a meeting on Thursday at 7:00 PM here. And Kristen is not here tonight. I could fill in a little bit for Facilities and Operations. We did meet with our whole crew, including the architects, managers and our internal staff and the committee. And we went over a number of situations that are coming up with regard to what is expected to happen on bidding and scheduling of the work and the phases that we have coming up soon. And trying to maximize our use of the money that we have available, knowing that inflation has hit the construction industry probably even more than some others. And creating alternates in the bidding structure to try to give us the best choices when we see what the, what they say when they open the envelopes, please. So that's moving along. And beyond that, I just wanted to, one thing I have as a personal question is being that this is my last term. I'm curious to know exactly what is my last meeting? If somebody could kindly advise me as to what is my actual end date?
Meeting in June.
Yeah, before reorg.
What's that?
The last meeting before the reorg meeting.
The last meeting before the reorg meeting? Okay, so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Flora? Flora?
Yeah, so we have a Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Committee meeting on the 20th, right, this week? So I-
6:00 PM, right?
Yes, at 6:00 PM. So I, I wanted everybody on the board to start thinking about what resolutions we want to be putting together this year, and, you know, please feel free to email me, so that we can start discussing them. But ideally, I'd like to come with an initial list of ideas at the next meeting, and we can talk about what language we want to use, what data we want to use to put those together. And hopefully, we'll be working with the Duchess County School Board Association with other districts to put forth, put forth resolutions that are coming from multiple districts, which I think will be a really, send a really powerful message this year. And I also have Friday tickets to the show, and I got my tickets today, and it is true, there were not very many left, so I'm, I can't wait to be there and to experience that. That's all from me.
Thank you. I wanted to schedule our next policy meeting. Eunice and Flora? I'm wondering if, are we gonna, since we're having a P R A L meeting this Thursday, are we going to have one? I guess that's actually a month from now, our next one on the 8th. So I was wondering if Monday, May 8th would work for, Monday, May 1st would work for a policy meeting with you guys?
That-
Do we have a meeting that day?
We do not.
That's fine, though, I should-
Yeah?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. The other, actually, the other possibility would be before the board meeting on the 25th.
I-
Which is a Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. We have another meeting next week, I guess we do?
Yeah.
The next Tuesday is the policy's budget.
There are four numbers.
Gotcha.
I could do that.
Eunice, would that work for you?
I'll just make it happen, because-
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's do that, and then we save a night out.
What time?
So we'll do it at 6:00.
Okay.
Is that okay for everybody? Okay.
I think so.
Okay, so Policy Committee, great. And, so it doesn't give us a lot of time to read the policies, but you can get them to us pretty quickly, Vicky and me, okay, great, thank you. And then I had a couple other things, what were they? I just wanted to say, I don't know if anyone has looked at the high school newspaper, but it's really terrific, there's music recommendations, and movie recommendations, and just like, going about town, and there's a criticism of the board in there, and I was just so glad that they had a place to put it. So, yeah, I think it's great, look, look at that, it's really inspiring. And Craig, thank you for talking about the Facilities Committee. Also, very excited about Les Mis, I have tickets for Friday and Sunday, because I have someone in the Pitt Orchestra, and they were really great tonight. The other thing, I'm just going to kind of put out there to plant the seed, I think this is something we would maybe take on after Reorg, but we've had the same legal counsel now for seven years, and common good practice is to review that every five to seven years. So I think we should talk about it as a board, and see how we want to handle that. I just wanted to kind of like, let everyone know that that was on my mind. And then the last thing, I should have said this earlier about the UPK, with the UPK conversation, but I'm really glad that you are doing it as a lottery. I think, you know, obviously, for me, I think doing it need-based would be the most equitable way to do it, and I hope that we can get there, but this is the fairest way that we can do it, and I think it's important, considering the diverse population we have in Beacon, and I think it serves this population as well as we can. And I know it's frustrating for the few people that do not get in, but I think it's the fairest way to go about it, so thank you for thinking about how to do that in a fair and equitable way. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, no, not there. First, we have to adopt the proposed budget for the 2023-24 school year. So can I have a motion to adopt the proposed budget for the 2023-24 school year?
So moved.
Second, Anthony, second by Flora. Are there comments or questions? I think this is a really good budget, I'm, I'm excited for it, I think it's sound and responsible, and supporting our kids the way they need to, so thank you. This isn't a roll call, is it, it's just a? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. And we need to adopt property tax report card, so can I have a motion to adopt the property tax report card and the school district budget notice?
So?
Alina?
Second.
Second by Anthony, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to, excuse me, to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
12.06 F4.
Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve 12.01, I'm sorry, 11.01 through 15.11?
So moved.
Unless 12.06 F4.
Yeah, right. So moved.
F4, you said F4?
I said F4, yeah. Motion by Flora, second by Eunice, comments or questions? Thanks for the donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Can I have a motion to, wait, can I motion for 12.06 F4?
So moved.
Second.
Flora and Alina, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Obscene.
I'm in favor, passes five to zero. And that's all, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Want to give it to Flora, I heard her first. Second by Eunice, comments, or?
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? I'm in favor, passes six to zero. Have a great night, everyone.